Why didn't you write me? Why? It wasn't over for me. I waited for you for seven years and now it's too late.
I wrote you 365 posts. I posted every day last year.
You wrote me?
Yes.
You...
It wasn't over. It still isn't over. You see, Facebook just changed your algorithm. You won't see our posts unless you follow.
What?
Just go to the top of the page, click Follow, and then see first.
Oh, well.
Have you seen this crazy yodeling kid? OMG, it's so funny.
Hey, new house looks great. How are you liking it here?
Well, I...
You wouldn't expect this in your home.
What?
Why on earth would you do it in ours? Hillsborough County put waste in its place.
Why didn't you write me? Why? It wasn't over for me. I waited for you for seven years and now it's too late.
I wrote you 365 posts. I posted every day last year.
You wrote me?
Yes.
You...
It wasn't over. It still isn't over. You see, Facebook just changed your algorithm. You won't see our posts unless you follow.
What?
Just go to the top of the page, click Follow, and then see first.
Oh, well.
Have you seen this crazy yodeling kid? OMG, it's so funny.
Hey, new house looks great. How are you liking it here?
Well, I...
You wouldn't expect this in your home.
What?
Why on earth would you do it in ours? Hillsborough County put waste in its place.
Why didn't you write me? Why? It wasn't over for me. I waited for you for seven years and now it's too late.
I wrote you 365 posts. I posted every day last year.
You wrote me?
Yes.
You...
It wasn't over. It still isn't over. You see, Facebook just changed your algorithm. You won't see our posts unless you follow.
What?
Just go to the top of the page, click Follow, and then see first.
Oh, well.
Have you seen this crazy yodeling kid? OMG, it's so funny.
Hey, new house looks great. How are you liking it here?
Well, I...
You wouldn't expect this in your home.
What?
Welcome to a meeting of your planning commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Thank you. Welcome to the January 14, 2019 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. Please sign to register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on an agenda item, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the rear of the room. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be given a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Kress to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance. All rise.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise for your mighty power and guidance. We thank you for this day and thank you too for the many blessings in our lives, for our great country, and for the opportunity to live in freedom. We ask your blessings on our leaders and we ask that you give each one of us here today the wisdom to make the right choices so that our decisions will be in the best interest of the people of Hillsborough County. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as a whole.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress. Roll call, please.
Good afternoon. Powell. Dix. Green. Joseph.
Here.
Kress. Marina.
Here.
Willman.
Here.
Thrower.
Here.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson. Rodriguez. Doughty.
Here.
Thank you. Of a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the approval of the minutes for the following meetings: the regular meeting from November 19, 2018; the public hearing on Tampa Plan Amendments from November 19, 2018; the regular meeting from December 10, 2018; and the public hearings for Hillsborough County, Plant City, and Temple Terrace for December 10, 2018. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Kress. Second by Commissioner Marina. Any discussion before we vote on those minutes is stated. Okay, no discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved as stated. Thank you. We are going to move on to public comment. If anyone in the audience wishes to comment on any items that are not on the agenda, please approach the podium at this time. Okay, no public comment. We're going to move on to item number three. MPO, CAC appointee Rick Richmond. Welcome.
Your CAC, your Citizen Advisory Committee appointee here for your quarterly update. The last time I was here was in September 18. So I wanted to go over a little bit of what's been presented before the board or before the committee since I was last here. Several items having to do with transit has been before the committee and a lot of things are starting either to... were completed and/or starting to roll forward. So the regional transit feasibility study was completed. It was found that the catalyst was going to be a bus rapid transit rubber tire. The next phase is going to be some public vetting and then plan development. The TECO Streetcar got a grant to extend service hours, increase frequency, and also now to go fare-free. So that's pretty exciting. You can get on it and provide a little bit more mobility for daytime users as well, and it's free of charge. So Bright Line also submitted an RFP to FDOT to use their ride-away for passenger rail. That's still under review. They currently operate a passenger rail between Miami and West Palm Beach. And under construction is one from West Palm Beach to Orlando. So they're looking to make a connection to Tampa. South Shore Transit Feasibility Study was requested to be reevaluated. This was a result of both the new tax referendum that was passed and also a result of Mission Max that removed several routes that connected downtown to the South County. Some other items were the Heights Mobility Study. Phase one was recently wrapped up and they're going to go into phase two. They've done a lot of community outreach to kind of identify a vision for what the Heights Mobility, the mobility options in that area in the corridors. And phase two will be evaluate and identify a preferred alternative. Health and all policies resolution was adopted by the MPO recently. And that's to work together with the Department of Health and MPO in identifying congruent opportunities to both increase or identify health impacts of certain projects and efficiencies between the two to be able to instill a healthier environment. The Tampa Bay survey, it's time Tampa Bay are done. There's a lot of information. And these data helps develop a hybrid scenario for the long-range transportation plan. There was a concern. So there was an option on there for a boulevard concept to remove the I-275 going north and convert that into a boulevard. That did not have very high favorability in the survey, but it was raised by one of the members to... maybe people didn't understand what that would do or maybe the implications or the efficiencies. So there was a request to continue looking at that option going forward. And just because it has low favorability today doesn't mean to remove it from further information. And lastly, T-BARDA started a study or implemented a study for regional planning coordination best practices. That has been completed. And there is a workshop tomorrow night for MPO board committees and the public to go over the results of that study and public comment. So that is my presentation. I appreciate it. Any questions or...
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you continuing to serve.
Thank you.
Next up is item number four. Shaun College is going to present the 2045 Population-Employment Projections Update.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Shaun College Planning Commission staff. This is your periodic update of the 2045 Population and Employment Allocation and Projection Project. Very excited about this presentation because we're in the process of concluding this effort, which was about a year, a little bit more than a year, in progress. And it's a very excited time for the project. As you know, maybe you might recall, there were a few, three different scenarios who went out to the public. And we workshopped with you as well and got a lot of different information. That information, all the information from the outreach, from all the discussions with the local governments, discussions with yourselves. We come up with a hybrid scenario. This builds on the TOD scenario in large, but it also has aspects of the trend scenario and the built-in boulevard scenario. It is a true hybrid scenario. It differs a little bit from the TOD in that it does not have rail along Lineball Avenue or the South Tampa Corridor, which are not being considered right now by the MPO. But the map you see is an actual graphic or thematic representation of the population employment growth and where it would potentially locate under this hybrid scenario. And again, it tries to control and keep growth into the central areas and business areas and high-population areas within the urban service boundary and the cities of the county. And you can see from this graphic, it also coordinates well with transportation. This is a great land use and transportation coordination effort which coordinates the two with growth and potential future transportation and transit lines. This effort also, you may recall, included a market analysis. We had a separate consultant doing a market analysis. And the information from the market analysis was included in the hybrid. There were some changes to how the model was working and how the mix of different land uses that would take place in different locations. And that directly corresponds to information we got from the market study. As well as the population employment ratio was changed a little bit directly in response to the market study, which told us that our first projections of employment were probably a little bit unrealistic. So they were changed downward just slightly, but still it's a very aggressive population projection. Again, the hybrid scenario with this thematic map shows capacity for a little over 2 million people through 2045. And we do have, again, a projection of just over 2 million people for 2045. So with this hybrid scenario, we would have capacity with some small expansion areas, which I'll go through shortly, that would have capacity for all the population employment for the 2045 scenario. And what is projected would be transportation, transit-oriented development, where we would try to continue to intensify some of the urban areas. There would also be some annexations expected for Plant City. And they would have quite a bit of growth. And there's some potential small expansions of the urban service boundary in the I-4 area and the RP-2 area, which would be in the later years potentially if necessary. This graphic shows you the existing urban service area. We're expecting an additional addition of approximately 553,000 people by 2045 to locate within the existing urban service area. And then there's the potential expansions of this area in the later years of our horizon, particularly in Plant City, which has plans to annex, as well as potentially in the I-4 corridor. Again, there was a recent ULI study of I-4 being a potential area for more growth. And then we have the RP-2 area, which also has a potential for more growth. These areas could also provide an area for approximately 66,000 more people through the 2045 horizon. The graphic I'm showing you now shows the population growth within the urban service area and its potential expansion areas. And what you can see from this graphic is that approximately 86% of the future growth could be accommodated under this hybrid scenario. And that is good because it meets our goal of at least 80% of the future growth happening within the urban service boundary. So this is consistent with our growth vision and policy. The graphic before you now gives you an idea of the population growth by jurisdiction, with Hillsborough County having significant about 460,000 persons growth by 2045, Tampa about 218,000. And then you can see Temple Terrace and Plant City as well with also some population expansion. Plant City in particular with its annexation areas has quite a bit of expansion in population through 2045. And I've provided you with hard copies at your desks. If any of these numbers are difficult to read, you can take this home with you and examine it. Particularly some of the future graphics I'm going to show you might be hard to read on the screen, but we've provided you with some hard copies. This graphic shows, again, employment growth. You'll see that employment growth is quite strong in Tampa. And this is consistent with Tampa also having some of the current employment centers. One thing we've done with the data that we have from this hybrid project, we've created what we call subareas. And these are just smaller areas to give the reader the ability to look at what's happening in particular in certain areas because different areas are growing at different rates. Different areas have different population and growth. Different areas have different employment growth. So we have some graphics. Again, it's... Won't be able to read on your screen, but you have a hard copy. But this just tells you that we do have an idea of what, how these different areas are differing in terms of population and employment growth. This graphic is a bar chart of that same graphic of the map. And we give you an eye, a different way of looking at what's happening in different subareas. And you can see, for example, on the left side of the bar chart, there's a downtown area, which is going to... we expect to have significant future population growth. And some of the other areas jump out. Like South County, again, is going to continue. We expect to have strong population growth. This is a similar graphic, but this one is showing employment. Again, to give you an idea, we know what the employment is now and we have an idea of what it will be in the future. And we can give you a bar chart of that, which is another way to look at what's happening in employment in different subareas. Again, downtown, you can see, stands out as having very strong future employment growth, as well as the west shore area on the right side of your screen. And Brandon, as well, all the way on the left is expected to have quite a bit of employment growth. With job, population, employment, we also have an opportunity to look at that ratio. How are things growing and differing in subareas between population and employment growth? One of the goals, and county staff is particularly getting more and more interested in ensuring there's the appropriate mix of population and employment because that has effects on transportation capacity and congestion. People, we want to be able to provide jobs where people live. So with this data, we can talk about and visually look at what is the ratio of population to employment or jobs per person now in an area and what is it potentially going to be in the future. And this can help inform of, maybe we want to try to make some policy changes in certain areas to try to improve that if necessary. And that concludes my presentation for you today.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Willman?
Thank you. Shaun, this is looking very good. I have a question about where is this in the process in terms of are adjustments still being made? Is there an opportunity to provide comments on the... especially the... It's kind of hard to tell from, you know, the hybrid scenario slide that's on, was the second slide in the packet that you provided because it's not clear where the growth areas intersect with... or the planning areas intersect with these kind of morphed shading. So just trying to understand particularly, like, you know, around downtown Tampa and south of there, like, how those numbers were plugged in and looking at the appropriate growth in those areas in particular, like Davis Sands, Harbor Island, Palmetto Beach. Like, it's kind of hard to tell. Maybe you could give some insight on that?
Sure. Well, there is still an opportunity to get comments on this. We are trying to bring it to a rough conclusion as soon, but we're still open to comments. And we'd love to get them from you if you have any changes. But right now, you know, we've been working quite a bit with county staff and we think we're pretty close to having a good handle on what's going to happen in the future and what we could potentially do through 2045. But we're always welcome to hear your comments and there's still opportunity to make changes if necessary. I would look at the map, the thematic map or heat map with the blue on it. It's more of a big picture, obviously. It's not, you know, accurate down to the small area, but it's a thematic map to give you an idea of kind of where the concentration of growth is. If you want to look at specific areas that we've given you so far, probably the subarea map is the one to look at because those shaded areas are specific areas. So you can get an idea of the current number for population and employment, and that's in the handouts for that subarea. And see, you know, if you think there's... if you wanted to comment on it, we'd be happy to take those comments. And we do have all this data by transportation analysis zone. So if you had a... If you work in a certain area and a certain, specific area that you have knowledge about, we could even look at doing some sort of analysis for you and give you data broken down a different way if that would be helpful.
Okay. Melissa?
I have one more question on, kind of related on the slide that has the TOD label on it. Just trying to understand what the TOD focus is.
Right. So the idea there, and I will defer to my transportation colleagues who may be in the room. But the idea was part of this hybrid. Again, it was drawn heavily from the TOD scenario, which tried to work to change land use and provide transportation infrastructure that could create better transit rated develops than what we have now. And that would help us concentrate population in those corridors. Is that... Anything else to add? I think, being a nod that was a pretty good answer. I don't know.
Melissa?
Well, the only thing, two things I would add. One, I mean, we've assumed certain potential corridors from downtown to west shore and downtown to university area and certain number of stops, that sort of thing. Obviously, that's something that will play out. And that's part... That is part of why the long-range transportation plan is updated every five years. And we do this every five years because the, as things get closer term, the projections can be more refined around some of those plans. So the goal right now is to get a data set that we can give to Sarah McKinley and the folks who do the modeling for this long-range transportation plan to determine what this... if we had this kind of population and employment allocation, what kind of transportation is needed. So they run the transportation model and get the needs plan. Then we start to move towards a LRTP being adopted in November. We'll prioritize that, come up with an actual cost feasible plan. So there... And then we do that again in five years. So there's... It's something that while it feels like it gets done, but in my mind, it's always sort of evolving as we refine these plans and, you know, we might do a subarea plan for a certain section of unincorporated county or we might... plan for a certain section of unincorporated county, or we might work on I-4, and we might refine the numbers that we've got here in the future and pull that in at that point. Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean, I'm curious, the presentation speaks to that there is sufficient density within the urban service area boundary to accommodate the projections through 2045, and I guess I'm, is that within the current comp plans and the current community plan overlays, or does it envision that there's going to have to be additional changes to those in order to accommodate?
It anticipates the current land uses we have with the addition of some of the potential future expansion areas that I identified. That's, Plant City, for example, has some aggressive annexations that will increase their population quite a bit. And there's also the potential in I-4 and RP-2 to accommodate some additional amount of population. So with those, through 2045, we can accommodate the projected population.
Okay.
And increase density and intensity in those TOD areas. So, it assumes all our vacant and developable land in the urban service area gets filled up at the development pattern that we have been doing.
In our future land use category.
Yeah, with the existing future land use categories, except for in certain areas, like where we've done the Brandon study, for example. We identified some of those TASs that were identified as opportunities for redevelopment in Brandon, and given them a little bit more than their existing land use category, because they were something we had a study and had targeted. And then similarly, the TOD, TASs, those zones get highlighted and get added additional density above what's in the comp plan.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you. I had a question on the jobs. So, if I'm understanding this right, population growth, we're looking at population growth in certain areas, we're linking that with job growth in certain areas, and we're trying to come in through this transit-oriented development kind of linkage, linking people with employment, right? Is that correct so far?
Right. We are projecting future population, and then there is a certain ratio of jobs that we're expecting in the future. We're looking at how many jobs we have in certain areas and what, how many jobs we might have in the future in certain areas.
My question then is, have we thought about what types of jobs those are, what quality of jobs those are? Especially in areas like Plant City, when I look at your information, there's a huge population growth that's obviously going to happen in Plant City. Looks like it's over doubling. Jobs aren't doing that. My question then becomes, well, are the jobs that are going to be coming there of a quality that raises, say, the median income standard of the people who are going to be transported to those jobs? Are we looking at that?
Well, this particular project did look at what industry, the three, you know, commercial, industrial, or, you know, type jobs. It looked at what sector these jobs were going to be in. And that's a function of what kind of land uses you're providing in those areas for different jobs, industrial jobs versus commercial jobs. That is part of the process. We're not looking at, for example, it's all high-tech jobs and versus, those type of things were not part of this particular project.
Okay.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Director answered part of my question with regards to the question that Commissioner Doughty raised about densities around these TOD areas. Does this suggest, though, that the Planning Commission will undertake a more detailed analysis of these areas in terms of looking at the, I mean, this, this is, this is great information, but it's at that 10,000-foot level. When it comes down, I mean, we'll be looking at what types of comp plan amendments are necessary to achieve, to actually achieve that, because I look at this graph, that's the one that is probably a little bit more dramatic than everything else in the document, okay? And it just begs the question, how are we going to get there? Okay? But that's all I can say.
Yes. The, one of the components of this project that we're still working through is determine, is looking at some of the interim years between now and 2045. And, and again, the market analysis that Sean talked about is informing which of these areas the growth might be attracted to first. And, so then, that will help us, it'll help the local governments in their planning of infrastructure improvements and which areas should maybe get them first, but it also helped us in identifying, well, which area might we need to look at that next level of planning first. That also is a function of what our partner local governments are doing and what, where they would like to focus some of our energies. So whether that's looking at, for example, the counties doing a study, a South County mobility study, you know, do we look at some of the land uses in South County in conjunction with them doing that work? I was going to mention in my executive director's report, but Hart was the recipient of a pretty significant grant for transit-oriented development that we in the city of Tampa partnered with them on applying for. So we'll be looking at TOD and how the policies that are in the Tampa Plan actually play out through some stationary planning, and then do we need to make some changes to those policies to make them work better? There's kind of an iterative process there. So I think there are different things, but it sort of depends on the priorities and where we think the, the need is first.
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. I wanted to, I noticed on the population map that seems to me that the majority of the large growth in population is going to be in areas east Tampa, you know, Brandon, like in the South County. And looking at the hybrid scenario, you know, I see that the majority of the planning there seems to be the idea of like express lanes and then to an express bus. Is there any reason why there isn't any thought of having rail or some type of rail going through there? Or, because I just don't understand how we're thinking about if someone wants to, you know, are we going to expect someone to go to take a car, to go get on a bus, then go onto a, you know, a train? You know, like the logistics of that seem pretty like a nightmare to me.
Right. We do have Sarah McKinley with the MPO here present, I'll have her come up.
Okay.
Yes, based on our LRTV development that we're doing right now for the 2045 plan, we sort of have a general idea of what those revenues that we'll be able to forecast are. And based on that, we're focusing the rail along the CSX corridor from downtown to USF, and then from downtown to West Shore. So those are sort of the two initial pieces that we're looking at. But we are also looking at the possibility for BRT and some other kind of technologies, dedicated right-of-way kind of stuff in those additional corridors. We just haven't planned those out yet. We're sort of still early in the LRTP development.
So, is there any, or has there been any consideration on, for people that are going to be living in these South County areas, you know, are there going to be a mode of transportation that would take them all the way into, you know, like, say into downtown Tampa or West Shore? Or is it the thought that they're still going to have to take another form of public transportation to still get around, if we don't want cars on the road?
Yeah, we actually, I'm the project manager on the South Shore Transit Study Reevaluation that we're wrapping up this month. But that looks at how to, it basically is a reevaluation of the 2014 study we did, updating the needs and the costs and providing an implementation plan to Hart. So like I said, we're wrapping that up, and that looks at getting them their connection back to downtown, improving services, getting them back the service on 301, and then also focusing on circulation throughout the area in South County so that they can not only get to the major employment centers and a one-seat ride, but also getting them around the area as well.
Okay. Commissioner Cruss?
Just out of curiosity, how accurate have we been on the projections in the past?
This is my first time doing this project. Did we look at that accuracy?
We've looked at it previously, but we haven't gone through and looked at it since then. I think we have like the 2010 numbers that we can go back and compare from way back in the day.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number five, Plan Amendment Database and Website Presentation. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Diego Guerra, part of your Planning Commission staff. Today, I'll be giving you a presentation on the Plan Amendment Database and an overview of the Plan Amendment website and how to access it. So a little bit of background, the Plan Amendment Database was initially developed for internal tracking purposes, to track plan amendments when they entered the system, if you will. It normally takes about six, 10 months for the plan amendment from application to full adoption. So in order to track those cases, we developed the Plan Amendment Database, and since that, we have made it publicly accessible. The extent of the records also depends on the jurisdiction that we are specifically talking about. So as you can see, the, depending on the jurisdiction, also depends on how far our records go. Our oldest records go back to 1989, which is for Hillsborough County, and then our most recent are for Temple Terrace, dating back to 2002. However, some data gaps do exist, and we're slowly working on filling in those data gaps. Those data gaps consist of just updating the information. As I'll show you later on in the presentation, some of the public accessible documents or case files that are available for viewing aren't fully updated. So we're slowly updating those files to make those case files fully 100% accessible to the public. So what's the utility of the Plan Amendment Database? It provides a historical TPC recommendations and jurisdiction outcomes. So it provides the historical analysis that we can conduct to see what areas, which jurisdictions approve or adopt plan amendments, which jurisdictions deny plan amendments. We can also look at, it also provides future land use patterns based on areas where plan amendments have been looked at, such as the graph on the right-hand side. That's a graph that we can, we produced, looking at historical data for plan amendments, looking specifically at industrial applications. So, applications that involved land use moving to industrial and coming from industrial. So there you can just see, just a graph of what we were able to produce. It also provides specific parcel use patterns, because in part of the application, you have to submit the folio numbers for the parcels that are being affected. So through that, we can also look to see how many times that specific parcel has been affected by previous plan amendments. It also records Department of Economic Opportunity case numbers for plan amendments that are larger than 10 acres that require the state review. So, we record those numbers, that way we can, if we need to pull those, those documents from the state, request those documents from the state, we have that information readily available to produce that request. So, diving into the database, on the left-hand side, you'll see what the database looks like to me. But pretty much, just for your information, the left and center fields are all based on what's available on the application. So, what you see in the application is what is entered into these two columns worth of fields. On the right-hand side is the jurisdictional outcomes from the public hearing. So, the public hearings for the Planning Commission, whether it was found consistent or not consistent, when it was, when that date occurred are entered, when the plan was adopted, withdrawn, or denied are also entered, to provide that time-spatial analysis for future, for future requests. The database is always being updated, because there's plans that get withdrawn, there's plans that get continued, we always update the database. So, even though the Planning Commission stops hearing a plan amendment or approves or finds a plan amendment consistent, I'm sorry, we continue updating that Plan Amendment Database as long as we keep getting all the records. On the bottom of the Plan Amendment Database, insert a link that provides the public access to the case files for this particular plan amendment. So the website is actually located only two clicks away from, on the website. On the purple, the purple menu bar, you hover down to Plan Amendments, hover over your jurisdiction, and then you click that first link. The first thing that comes up are a set of years, which take you straight to the case files, should you want to view the particular case files. The interactive map, you can actually click a polygon, and that will open up a pop-up that you can go through and provide the same information that you see on the table. The table, you can actually adjust and modify based on your specifications and what you want to see. If you don't want to see all the information, you can check and uncheck boxes. If you want to see specific cases or specific jurisdictions, you can check and uncheck boxes as well. And that, the link to, or I'm sorry, the button to do that is located on the top right corner of the, of the table. That allows the public and those consuming, those consumers of the website, are, they're able to see exactly what I'm doing or what we're doing here at the Planning Commission when it relates specific to the plan amendment process, Plan Amendment Database, and how we're tracking those, those requests or those cases. In the previous slide, I mentioned the link, the hyperlink is now, you can see that blue, those blue letters right there in the middle, that is the link that I entered. If you click that link, it takes you to the case files. The case files, like I said, right now, from 2016, oh, I'm sorry, from 2016 to present, they're mostly updated. So they have at least the application, the resolution from the Planning Commission, the ordinances from the jurisdictions that they relate to, and then other various documentation. From 2016 back toward 1989, we're slowly updating those as we go. We have to pull a lot of that information from the warehouse, from our historical archives, scan those documents, put them in, put them in the case files, and slowly do that. So we're slowly working on that. But as of 2016, for the most part, and up to the present and future, it's being continuously done. So, in conclusion, the Plan Amendment Database acts as a system of record for the Planning Commission. It holds all the records, all the records, and provides historical data for future analysis that anyone may need or ask for. Like I said, there are data gaps in terms of availability of records, but we are being, we are slowly updating those and closing those data gaps as we come to them and update the system. Barring any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the, for the presentation, Diego. This was, this is very helpful. I'm glad to see we're, you know, we're sort of processing our data in this manner that we, that we generate here in the Planning Commission. But as you were talking about the interactive nature of this, this particular part of the website, let's be clear, this doesn't mean that because somebody didn't support a plan amendment, they can't just go in and hit a button and delete it.
Correct. Correct. So, the website is interactive in the sense that they can filter what they want to view, but they cannot edit the data.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Then my follow-up question is, in terms of gathering this, this information, this data in this manner, as I've mentioned to our executive director in the past, I'm interested in sort of seeing, so what actually happened, what got built, or what didn't get built as a result of either our action, or what was, what's in the, what's in the database? And I know this, you weren't, you know, you're not tracking that, but, but I'm still, I'm still interested in knowing, you know, how our, you know, what role our decisions played in whatever actually transpired. That's all.
So, that is something that we have on our list to bring back to you, specifically as it related to a request regarding mixed use development and whether or not the mixed use, land use categories were turning into mixed use development. We've run into an interesting problem in that analysis in that the way, whether it's the property appraiser or the permits, it's not something that's easily being tracked. We can follow the rezoning that happened, but often, the rezoning isn't even what is actually built on the actually built on the ground. They might build one part of that mix of uses unless it's a truly vertically-integrated mixed-use building. When we look at, when we followed some of the Plan Amendments through the process in the county, for example, they'll get a rezoning, and it will have multiple uses on the property. Then you go to the next step, and the permit, the permits may have been pulled just for one part of that development. The existing land use, which is...
That's a phase development.
Yeah, it's a phase development, it's a great example. Then when you get to the property appraiser in the existing land use, the property's now been subdivided into a whole bunch of different folios, and they are not, so they're not tracking it as a mix. They're tracking it as single-family homes and commercial and office somewhere else. At any rate, so...
Single building.
Yeah, yeah, right. Even if it's a mixed-use structure, the property appraiser tracks it by what the majority of the structure is. So, like a tower downtown will show up as a residential structure even though it's got ground-floor retail. So, we've actually been a little bit challenged in trying to figure out how to best follow in a succinct systematic way without, I mean, we can go out in the field and look and see how some of these things have been built, but that may not be the most systematic way to approach it. Yeah, so that's something that we're still working through. Yeah. Right.
But the reason I bring this up... Is because of exactly what Sean was projecting, you know, showing in the projections about population and employment growth in terms of where is it? You know, is there, you know, is it compatible with what is, the trends that, you know, that are emerging? Is it likely that those deep-blue areas on those maps will actually, you know, come to fruition, let's say, with mixed-use development and higher densities, that type of thing? So, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, and I'm glad to see that the agency is doing this kind of stuff, getting this information out there. As a person who does like data science and programming, this is going to be a boon for a lot of people. Like, the property appraiser's office, I know exactly what you're talking about with the folio numbers and stuff, so this is a great interlinking of that. But beyond all that nerdy data stuff, my question is, I have two of them. The first one is, I get the public interface, the low kind of, you know, info area, but is there a high info connection? Like, can you do, like, JSON requests, or can a person interface with the website like that and pull big quantities of data off the site, or is it strictly this kind of...
So, right now, it's strictly this filtering of what they want to see. We haven't had a whole lot of requests regarding that high-volume data pool for large chunks of analysis. It's a lot mostly, we want to know what the status, what occurred in this case-type historical type information.
Okay. Well, that kind of answers. My next question was going to be, have you seen a huge increase in traffic because of this thing? Do we monitor even traffic? Sounds like you do.
We do monitor the traffic on it. I, myself, do receive requests from time to time regarding historical cases. That's also something that we do when we get historical cases that aren't specifically updated on the website, such as 2000, some of the cases for 2015, 14. Soon as we get that request, it's kind of like two birds with one stone. We fulfill the request, and we update the website as well. Majority of the requests are just looking, I want to know the status of this, or when is the case being heard at the Planning Commission, or at the Planning Board for Plant City, or so on and so forth, are the specific questions. And that's where they can go to specifically track the status of the case and how it progresses through the process.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Doughty?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, it's kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Green's, and it may be more for Melissa than Diego, but, and it relates to some other discussion that was happening before the meeting that, tonight. Is there a way, maybe, for you to get tied in to just receipt it, not necessarily review, but to receive, like, as-built documents after Development Services is done, rather than go into the building? You know, Department has building by building by building. At least you'd get a development pattern, the infrastructure's done, you'd be able to see, okay, yeah, this is a multifamily, or this is a commercial site, this is a single-family residential. And then, I think that's probably, yeah, where your look should happen, to be able to back into, are we actually meeting the densities? Are our comprehensive plans actually leading us where we think we are going and need to go, as opposed to, well, is it getting lost in the process after we're done with it?
Right. Well, actually, I don't think we received those exactly, but next month, Tatiana Gonzalez, who tracks our building permits and looks at those trends, so that's another level that we keep track of here as well, will be here for your annual performance measures report, to see how we've done on a number, on a variety of things. But one of the things, at your request as part of my annual review last year, was to add us beginning to track how development is corresponding to comprehensive plan goals. And so, she'll be bringing some information based on building permits as it relates to that. But looking at as-built documents is something we can absolutely look into.
It seems that building permits is another, it's, I don't know, it's going to lag.
Yeah.
You know, we may actually, you know, if they're not building it as fast as we might think...
Right. You might only see in the permits, like, that first phase.
Right.
That sort of thing. You're not going to see the complete development.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're moving on to item number six. Action item, Port Tampa Bay Permit Number 18-035. Welcome back.
Once again, Sean College, Planning Commission staff. This is Port Tampa Bay Permit 18-035, Port Tampa Channel Maintenance Dredging. Port Tampa Bay forwarded this permit to the Planning Commission with a request for a consistency determination. And so, the purpose of this item before you is for a consistency determination with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That is per Chapters 95-488 and 97-351 Laws of Florida. Slide before you shows the general location. This is the Port Tampa City area of Tampa, city of Tampa, just to the west of MacDill and south of the Gandy Bridge. Here again is a more zoomed-in visual of the project location. Existing conditions at this location, it is an active industrial marine area. There is hardened shoreline. It is a deep-water active channel, and there has been an existing permit for maintenance dredging, and this permit is up for renewal. And that is the permit that we're considering today. The proposed project would be a permit to perform annual maintenance dredging as necessary to maintain this active industrial channel to its design depth of negative 34 feet. Considerations for consistency with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. The considerations that I would cite would be that this is an active marine industrial area. It is not new dredging. It is maintenance dredging. It's an existing deep-water channel. There are no environmental impacts associated with the maintenance dredging of this existing channel, and it is previously permitted. With those considerations, staff would recommend to you that you issue the resolution in your packet with a recommendation of consistency and forward that to Port Tampa Bay for their consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the port here to speak on this item?
I'm not from the port, but my name is Joe Kowalski. I'm with K2 Engineering, and I'm representing the owner. This is a private channel, so with about eight to 10 different tenants that use it.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for the record? Do your address?
Joseph Kowalski, K2 Engineering, 7804 US Highway 301 South in Riverview, Florida, 33578. I'm here if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, no public comment. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Chris?
Maybe just a basic question, but how long does a permit like this for? Is there a standard associated?
This is a 10-year permit.
10 years?
Yeah, it's been in effect since the '70s. It was actually, I think, developed in '74.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, I think this is like the fifth or sixth renewal.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Dix?
Thank you, Mr. College. The site where the spoil fill will go, that's a reusable site. And I don't mean reusable, but that's been used over and over, right?
That's my understanding. Can I have the applicant comments on that?
Uh, thank you.
Yeah, there's about 13 acres that have been used since the '70s.
And I'm just curious, this is just from my education, because I've been asking people this sort of things for years, and nobody knows. But the stuff that comes out, the fill, I mean, is that something that, not that we want to, but I mean, if we wanted to, could you actually use that for building? I mean, that property could be built upon as it gets...
It's kind of a mud material.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's kind of clay, muddy. If it dries out, it could probably be used at some point.
And what would be the difference between that fill and some of the little islands that we've created in the bay out there?
The same.
Same thing.
Same type of material, except I think some of the stuff in the islands is different. It's a heavier clay and rock. This is more mud.
And so, and this is a wild off-the-wall question, but just again, to fill my education here for a second, is that the same type of medium, the same type of fill that has been used, for example, in building some of these islands around the world outside of Dubai and whatnot?
I'm not positive.
No, no?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think, just like I said, it's a mud material.
Silly me. I just think, you know, it'd be wonderful to build an island for the Tampa Bay Ray Site, you know? That way, Pinellas and Hillsborough could share it right there in the middle.
I don't think this would have the consistency...
I understand. No, we could dredge and then fill, and then, you know. There's always a bit of seriousness behind a humorous comment. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, no further questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the Planning Commission approve the attached resolution finding Port Tampa Bay Permit Application Number 18-035 consistent with the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Doughty, a second by Commissioner Green. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. We are moving on to Item 7A, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-16.
Good afternoon, commissioners. David Hay, Planning Commission staff. This next item is the three items for the November 2018 City of Tampa Plan Amendment cycle. There's three amendments that we're bringing forward for your overview today. There's two map and one text amendment. The first amendment is TACPA 1816, and no, I'm not Jennifer. Jennifer's under the weather today, so I'm pinch-hitting for her. The First Amendment 1816 is located within the Central Tampa Planning District. It is part of the campus of the University of Tampa. You'll see here on the map, they've accumulated a number of parcels over the years. You can see their sports field down in the lower left. We're all familiar with those nets along Kennedy. This is Kennedy Boulevard here. This is North Boulevard running through the campus. This is the main campus to the east, Kennedy as it goes into downtown, of course, the Hillsborough River. You have Cass Street on the north side, and then these are the railroad tracks that run down and basically are on the western boundary of the subject site. There is one piece just to the west of the railroad tracks, and this is Willow Avenue right here. This is privately initiated by the university. It is a regular amendment, so it's over 10 acres, so it will be going up for, it's subject to a state and regional review. It's a total of 15.77 acres. They have three future land use categories on the subject site. They have the regional mixed-use 100, which is the most intensive outside of downtown Tampa. They also have the urban mixed-use 60, and they have a portion of recreation open space that was the former Barcdale Community Center, which has moved to West Tampa. They are seeking the whole site to be consolidated under that public, semi-public, future land use category. Here, you can see the different land use categories. Again, this is the main part of the campus that we're all familiar with. That's the public, quasi-public, the blue. Just south of the campus, running along Kennedy Boulevard, are a number of those regional mixed-use 100, that purple color. As you move, continuous move west of the site, you get into that urban mixed-use 60, future land use category. And then, there's the recreation open space represented by the green. If the amendment is finally adopted, you could see all the properties under the ownership of the University of Tampa through this amendment would go to that public, quasi-public, future land use category. Under the existing, though it is, those sites are being consolidated right now, those sites can be considered for over 1,000 dwelling units or over 2 million square feet of non-residential. Under the public, quasi-public, there is no maximum floor ratio, since they have to be government-owned facilities or public entities like churches, hospitals, and schools. They are guided by the surrounding future land use category of the development that surround the site. So, there is no maximum potential. It's handled more at the zoning stage. Questions?
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Chris?
I don't know. You mentioned the nets on Kennedy Boulevard, and I know that that's also an overlay district along Kennedy. Does any of this, would it all be concurrent with what's kind of drawn out in the overlay district?
Well, the overlay, they would still have to come in through their master plan, and what preceded this was they're going to be seeking a rezoning, and then that's when we told them, well, there's certain, under the current situation, you can't exceed your maximums for those properties because of your designated land use. And that's what triggered them to come in through this. So, nothing out of this amendment will exempt them from the design overlay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. David, I understand, you know, consolidating the university campus under one land use designation makes a lot of sense. Does this give them greater flexibility in terms of building out the campus?
Yes.
In the future?
Yes. Due to when they came in, they are looking at potentially developing some of these parcels that they required, and one of the parcels, the proposed development exceeded the maximum future land use category, the adopted future land use category. So, this, under the public, quasi-public, it can be considered all one, and they can move things around. So, it does provide greater flexibility.
Good. Good.
Okay. No further questions? We'll move on to Tampa Conference, Plan Amendment 18-17.
1817. David Hay, again, Planning Commission staff. We've gone from a very large site to a kind of relatively small site over in West Shore. It is in the West Shore Planning District. It's also within the boundaries of the West Shore Business Center. And the parcel falls within the West Shore Palms neighborhood. It's just to the east of West Shore Plaza. You could see, here's the subject site. This is West Shore Boulevard, Kennedy. This is the Walgreens on the corner. This, of course, is West Shore Plaza, and then you've got Interstate 275. And you're all familiar with this portion of West Shore. There's a lot of commercial development. And then, as you move into the West Shore Palms neighborhood, they've been redeveloping into a more single-family, attached, and multifamily neighborhood over the past 20, 30 years. It is a privately-initiated map amendment. It is small scale. It's .2 acres. Currently, the subject site is Residential 35, and the applicant is seeking to go to that community mixed-use 35, future land use category. Here we have the subject site outlined. It's that dark brown color. All the properties to the north and to the east of the site are in that same brown color. They're all that Residential 35, future land use category. Immediately to the south and to the west, you get into that purple, which is the regional mixed-use 100, future land use category, the most intensive category outside of downtown. East of Trask, it goes down into the Residential 20, represented by the lighter brown, and then there's some urban mixed-use 60 along Kennedy Boulevard. And then, further south, you get into the Beach Park, the large lot, single-family development of Beach Park. development of Beach Park, and that's represented by that Residential 6, the yellow, future land use category. If the amendment is finally approved, it would go to, it's hard to tell, but it would go to this Community Mixed Use 35 category. Oh, one other thing. Just to let you know, this is the, this green line that kind of squiggles through the area, that's the coastal high house area. Under the potential impacts of the request, currently, under that Residential 35, there can be a maximum of seven dwelling units or a maximum of 5,325 square feet. Under the proposed Community Mixed Use 35, the residential density would remain the same at seven units, but the non-residential square footage would increase to 17,424 square feet. The amendment would also allow consideration of that commercial general zoning district, and it also, since it is a mixed use, the applicant can use the flora ratio either for residential or non-residential, depending on what's more beneficial for the applicant. Questions?
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Powell?
Who is the applicant?
It's, the person that we've been working with is Gina Grimes.
All right, I was just curious.
It will be in the packet, the application, everything. We put in the packet, so you should be seeing it in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, this is a single-family lot, house lot.
It's the size of a single-family.
Right. And the land use to the west, facing West Shore, would ultimately be still different than what this amendment is requesting.
Right.
The change.
To the west, to the west is Regional Mixed Use 100, and then to the east would be, or to the north, the Residential 35.
Okay. Is this, well, I don't want to ask the same question my colleague did on ownership, but this parcel is separated by an alley from the commercial use on West Shore. Is that correct?
Yes, I don't believe it's actually improved.
Okay.
It's, I don't believe it's actually there. On the map it is, but I don't, going out there, I don't.
It's probably been vacated or?
It could be vacated or just on paper.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's all I just want to get.
Sure. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-18.
1818. Again, David Haye, Planning Commission staff. This one is our text amendment. This is publicly initiated by Tampa's City Council. This was in response to an applicant seeking a future land use, we might all remember this one, the Future Land Use Map Amendment for the water out in Rattlesnake Point, the, actually not, Rocky Point, I always get those two confused, Rocky Point. The city has directed the staff to provide policy language on when it's appropriate for future land use categories that are requested on water. As part of that, our staff has worked with the staffs of Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission and the Port Tampa Bay, and the city's legal department have come up with this draft language that will be in front of you next month. There's four main areas that the language is seeking to change. It's limiting the future land use designations on surface waters to the environmentally sensitive area land use category unless meeting certain requirements. It would also prohibit fill of surface waters unless meeting those new established requirements. It's adding definitions for incidental fill, man-made water bodies, and surface waters. And it's also modifying the definition of overriding public interest in the city. That's it for now. We'll have to wait till next month, but any, I think Sean's still here. Yes.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Just one question. This environmentally, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Environmentally sensitive area, land use category, that exists? We have that?
We do. You'll see a lot of it up in New Tampa. When New Tampa was annexed, when you look at the map, a lot of the wetlands have the ESA category on it. There's not much south of New Tampa. A lot of it is up to the north. There may be some around, there's actually some out near Rocky Point, out near the Hyatt. The Hyatt has some out there.
Okay, but this would apply to all coastal?
Well, and Sean can correct me if I'm wrong. It would apply to only new. So if someone's coming in and asking for, you know, I own ten acres in McKay Bay or something like that, the only category that that person, if they're not meeting those special requirements, they would have to go to the environmental sensitive land use category.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. Why July 1st, 1994 as the cutoff date?
I will let Sean answer that.
Sean College, Planning Commission staff. To have a date whereby pre-existing differences in pre-existing or more recently created man-made water bodies differ, that was a request of City Council when we workshopped this language with them. So we worked with the Environmental Protection Commission on what's appropriate, and it was their recommendation that they use that date. They cited that that was a significant period when the state of Florida, let me see if I have it here, Florida Legislature enacted a uniform wetland and surface water definition, which specifically included, with some minor exceptions, artificially-created surface waters. So it was EPC's recommendation that that be an appropriate date to whereby you cite that man-made water bodies, artificial water bodies, pre-existing would apply to this policy.
Okay, so Jen, my next question would be, and just speaking my own interpretation, at least in regards to the Rocky Point example, what was good about that presentation that showed sort of the evolution of Rocky Point? And my looking at it, it seemed as if there was always a body of water there. The shape of it may have changed because of development, but there had always been a body of water there. So that's why I asked that question, because going back to that example, it seemed as if this is natural, and because of that private park that was developed, there had to be some sort of shape given to it in order for development to occur. So I understand there's, you know, there's other policies there, but that's why I asked that question, because to go, to pick something that is really recent in time for a, you know, properties that may have developed over the course of hundreds of thousands of years because of the environment, it just seems strange that that is within, you know, a generation, that it doesn't go back any further than that. So that's why I asked. It just seemed like an interesting date to pick. I understand the reasoning behind it, but I don't, it would seem as if you would go, to use a Rocky Point example, development occurred there when it seemed as if there was always that body of water there. So if you go with the 94 example, you could, you could do something there. You could fill it under this.
I would have a different interpretation of that. I agree with you that it was my interpretation at time on that specific project, that that area had always been water. It had just been deepened and altered. What it's saying in this language is that if it was artificially-created from 94 or prior, you do not have the option of an exemption.
Okay.
Meaning, meaning the assumption is that over a period of time, whether it was man-made created or not, it starts to function more naturally.
Okay.
So, and thereby is given these protections. So if it was dug out years ago, let's say, for example, that was land, but it was dug out eighty years ago, it's being afforded the protections because it's now basically functioning more naturally.
Okay, so even that part that kind of gave it that true shape, or the shape that we now consider today?
Right. What might be exempted under this with that 94 is maybe a developer or a potential development in an inland portion of Tampa digs a borrow pit, a borrow pond, and then ten years later, he never, this person never develops and figures, oh, I probably digged too much, I want to put back another half acre of this borrow pond. Well, you could be allowed to do that because that's not functioning. It's a more recent excavation. We're not going to now claim that thing that was dug five years ago as natural, and give it, afford this protection. It's only the ones excavated some time ago that are now afforded the protection.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Doughty?
Sorry. Sean, I know we talked a little bit about this at one of our Hillsborough River Board meetings, but I just want to make sure, I know you take, you've cited Florida statutes for your definition of surface water. You know, the Water Management District has their own determination of surface waters. I just want to make sure that we're not getting crosswise somewhere, that we're creating a new or a different prohibition that's in addition to or above what EPC and SWIFTMUD might already allow under the course of regular development, you know? That we're not, we're not adding an additional prohibition that doesn't exist today, if that makes sense to you.
Right. I don't believe so. This language and this definition was coordinated with EPC. They were, they were part of the review for this.
Have you talked to anybody at the Water Management District?
I don't believe we have directly now.
I might suggest that you talk to somebody in regulation.
Unless it gets forwarded, I'm not sure if it gets forwarded during the review process to David. We can double-check. We're not sure if that may have been forwarded to them as part of the review process, but we can certainly do that at this time.
Yeah, just to make sure that there's nothing that, you know, raises a red flag for them.
We're taking a note to do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Green? Okay. Any other questions? We will move on to Executive Director's Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. At your seat, you'll see a whole bunch of things that are handed out, so I'm going to go through all of those. But I'll start with my Executive Director's Report and just highlight a couple of things. In December, I was asked to participate in the American Planning Association's Comprehensive Plan Standards Update Committee. Because of our plans being recognized, the three cities' plans being recognized through their Sustaining Places program, they were looking at updating those standards for that Sustaining Places program and asked that I participate in that. Mr. College has been working with the county and the University of South Florida on a community vulnerability sea level rise project that, it's with USF and a number of different colleges in USF, but led by the Community Design and, wait, I'm messing up the title. Floor Senator for Community Design, thank you. I knew I had the department wrong, but it's being led by them. And that is a multi-year study that will look at community vulnerability, how we can meet the Peril of Flood Act that we worked on, plan amendments for the city of Tampa about two years ago now, on that compliance, but also looking at their local mitigation strategy, a whole host of things. We'll be bringing more information to you, some presentations on that in the future, but I wanted you to know that that project's ongoing. Just last week, we did a amendment to our budget to realign our number of positions, basically looking at reallocating the existing personnel dollars as we have four staff who are retiring in this fiscal year, as well as one vacant position, looking at adding four additional lower-level planner positions by reusing that money in a different way. So the county commission had to approve that budget realignment because that was a change in the number of positions we were approved for, and that happened last week. Also, we held one of an ongoing series of internal institutional knowledge training sessions. Because we have all these folks retiring, we're spending some time with them, learning about, from Steve Griffin, how zoning conformance happened back when the comp plan was adopted, and from Pedro Para about, and Michelle Ogilvy, about the community plans in the county and the city of Tampa. And so we held one of those. Just wanted to let you know that we are preparing ahead for those folks leaving and trying to get as much information from them as we can before they leave. I've also had some opportunities to meet with our new county commissioners, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Overman, bring them up to date on some of the work, in particular, the work that Sean College has been doing on the population and employment projections, as that's an ongoing project. So, a number of things are sitting at your desk. You will have received a copy of our annual report. Now, this is the, not from the printer, the print, they're still at the printer getting the beautifully with staples copy done. So as soon as those are out, we will send you some copies in the mail, so you have them. But a huge thanks to Mary Hoppy, our Public Outreach Manager, as well as Roger Mathie, Greg Colangelo, a whole host of folks who helped put this together over the last few weeks. You also will see, fresh off the presses, your 2019 MPO calendar. They have a ton of meetings every month for different committees and things like that. This will help you keep track of all of them. It also provides some great highlights of the work that the MPO did over the last year. Let's see. Also, we have updated, for those who may have received one before, our Future Land Use Reference Guide. So this handout gives you a quick summary of all of the land use categories by color and what they mean for all four local governments. It's a great thing to stick in whatever you carry to the meetings, just to be able to refer to. So we've updated it with some of the more recent changes to land use categories that have been made. Okay, going through the next couple of things. You will have received a flyer and some candy to remind you to take our commuter challenge, which is all about falling in love with your commute. Lynn Miranda made a fantastic flyer here to highlight that we are doing our commuter challenge on Valentine's Day week. That also happens to be February 11th, is your next Planning Commission meeting, so it'll be interesting to see if anybody takes the challenge to get here by a different mode of transportation. Carpooling, Downtowner, the streetcar, as Mr. Richmond mentioned, is free. There's all sorts of options. Maybe somebody will bike here, I don't know. We'll see what happens. But we'd love for you to take the challenge with us, and if you're willing to tell us in advance that you're going to be taking the challenge and help, and let us document you took the challenge, we'd love that too, or take a selfie, anything like that. We'd love to share that our commissioners are participating, if you're able to. So just a couple of other flyers are here as announcements. We're participating with the Vision Zero Coalition in the Martin Luther King Day Parade this coming Monday, and have a group walking in the parade, so if anybody's interested in participating in that. And then on January 31st, there is a workshop with FDOT here in, on the 26th floor, from four to six, looking at the updated plans for 275 and I-4, particularly the interchanges in the downtown core, and how they've been looking at the MPO's recommendations and made modifications to their plans, or are looking at some, responding to those issues. Then at the bottom of my original report, you will see our meeting on February 11th. We're going to try and have a group photo at 2:15. If you could all be here, and if it's going to, if we're going to take it out at the park, that sort of weather-related will notify you ahead of time. But we're going to try and get a photo of all the Planning Commissioners together. We haven't done one of those in a little while. Then our regular meeting will start at three, and we'll possibly have another workshop on the multimodal centers and our public and our public hearing on Tampa Plan Amendments. The other thing I wanted to mention is that on February twenty-first, a number of our new staff are getting pictures taken, headshots taken. As you'll see in the annual report, we've had professional photographs taken of everybody. If many of you have a professional headshot taken by HTV or somebody else in the past, if you're interested in getting your photo updated or would like a new one, I'll be sending out an email with the details of where that the photographer is and how you can sign up for that. But they're all being done on February twenty-first. And then the last thing I would mention is that our workshop after this will be held in the Plan Hillsborough Room. You can swing by and grab something to eat, and we'll head in there. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Melissa? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is other business, first item chairs business. I don't have anything. So, any old business? Okay, no old business. Any new business? Any committee reports? Okay. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick comments on this past Monday's, Tuesdays, rather, MPO board meeting. And a couple of, couple of items, we spent a good, good bit of time on. One, it was, two action, two action items, let's say. One was the FDOT tentative work program, which they're still receiving comments from the MPO board on. And, let's see, this covers the fiscal, work program for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four. And the total funding during this five-year timeframe for all the projects that were identified is one point six billion dollars. That's over a five-year, five-year period. And then there were some, let's see, I think we have, the board has until January twenty-eighth to lodge any objections to the tentative work program. A good deal of discussion centered around, as many of you know, the lawsuit that was filed against, well, against several entities related to the transit tax referendum. Okay? And the discussion for the board really had, had to do with, with legal representation. And of course, we agreed to join with the county as a, help me, try to get the right terminology here. We, we're the, we, MPO board is a.
Respondent.
Respondent. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. In this, in this, in this, in this matter also. And, let's see, there was one other item that our executive director, Ms. Alden, mentioned, that I think might be somewhat interesting, at least to me, nevertheless. There's a special workshop for board members on the fifteenth. And this will focus on T-Ball to regional planning, best practices study. And then on January thirty-first, of course, there will be a workshop held from four to six to allow for further input on this. But with that, that's, I think Rick identified a couple of other things that transpired at the last meeting also, but that, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just talk a little bit about the, our last discussion at the Hillsborough River Board Technical Advisory Council. We had a presentation provided to us about microplastics. And it was something that was kind of new to me. I, I guess I was aware, but wasn't really aware, that plastic is in a whole bunch of stuff. It's in your toothpaste and in your shampoo and your hand cream and all kinds of stuff. It's what makes it sparkly and shiny. And basically, I mean, I don't know, some of you may have seen or heard of presentations about our, there's a couple of areas on our planet where plastic bottles and that sort of stuff have accumulated in the ocean, and it's, you know, square miles of piles. Well, consider the fact that these little microplastics are doing the same thing. And it was a very interesting presentation that we had and about the dangers of them. And they were, some of the manufacturers are aware and are making changes. But the suggestion was that we can do, we can be vigilant ourselves and then look at the ingredients and see if polyethylene is in the thing. And if there's a substitute, try to avoid those particular objects because our sea creatures are eating them. And we don't know a whole lot yet, but just keep it in mind. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other items before we adjourn? Okay. We have the workshop immediately after in the Plan Hillsborough Room. So, meetings adjourned. Thank you.